Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the seat of government in Cartersville, Georgia. We ask that you guide us and direction and clarity in decisions made, and we'll be so grateful. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please break the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stapp, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Rand, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from May 5th. And council, you've had an opportunity to look these over. Now would be the time for any edits or corrections, additions, or deletions. And if not, motion to approve would be in order. Some move. Second. On favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We start off this evening with a proclamation to commemorate Safe Boating Week. And I believe Mr. George here this evening? There you are. I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna give you an upper... I'll come down and present it. And if you'd like to make a few comments afterwards, you're welcome to do that. This proclamation reads, whereas the city of Cartersville, Georgia, with its unique weather and water resources, offers special related water recreational activities to its residents and people from around the world; whereas Allatuna Lake, when full, covers more than 12,000 acres, has 270 miles of shoreline, and is one of the most visited lakes in the United States; whereas the local Allatuna Lake flotilla of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary averages nearly 300 hours of safety patrols on Allatuna Lake, teaches more than 90 hours of boating safety public education classes, provides 800 vessel safety checks to local boaters, staffs 700 hours of local public affairs events, and provides boating safety materials during 600 visitations to local retailers. On average, 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., and life jackets could prevent a significant number of boating fatalities. Whereas carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating can help ensure boaters stay safe. Now therefore, I'm Matthew J. Santini. Mayor of the city of Cartersville do hereby support the goals of all of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2022 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year... Excuse me, and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. It's my pleasure to present this to you. I'll come around and see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank members of the council. I appreciate that very much. I'm Big Anthony, United States Coast Guard and United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. I appreciate your support of National Safe Boating Week.
Next item is the planning commission appointment. Mr. Manino.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Ward 4 appointee to the Planning Commission, Mr. Harrison Dean, has resigned. With that, Anissa Cooley has been recommended to take his place. Harrison was on the Planning Commission for approximately 18 years. We appreciated his service. With that, Anissa Cooley is recommended.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I would like to commend Harrison for his 18 years of distinct service. I think he was appointed by councilman Clarence Denham, and served continuously since then. And he has resigned from the council, family health reasons, and his recommendation was eagerly accepted by me. Wish for the council approval.
Thank you. Do you have to put that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion, I would accept. Let me come to you, Mr. Cooley.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
On favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Calvin, and thank you, Randy. Mr. Hartegre, if you'll please get us started with AZ 22-02.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a de-annexation application for 3.23 acres located behind the Holiday Inn Express Inn and Suites off Highway 20 there at the 75 interchange. It is a property that's isolated, and really you can't do too much with it by itself. Currently in the county, on the property to the west, there is a residential development that's in the works right there. Southland Engineering is the engineer on the project. Carl Lugeans is here tonight to speak to this application. A portion of the site work for that residential development has carried over onto this property. It's a logical conclusion, a logical step for a de-annexation to occur in order to accommodate that residential development. As Planning Commission was reviewing this, we tried to carry forward the zoning conditions that were originally assigned to this from 2004. The one issue that came forward that we'd like to extend, as well as the gas department, was to continue a gas easement to allow the natural gas mains to be connected at some point in time between State Route 20 and Center Road. The original easement called for some location near 75. The recommendations put forth by Mr. Lugeans and the Planning Commission was to allow the developer to approve the location and to limit the gas easement to 20 feet width. There's really no other conditions for this property. It seems to be a pretty straightforward and logical step to eliminate a piece of property currently in the city with no real use for that. So, the recommendation for Planning Commission is to approve the de-annexation with those two conditions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hartegre at this time? If there are none, I'll open up a public hearing for AZ 22-02. And anybody wishing to step forward and make comment may do so at this time. And when doing so, please your name and address for our clerk.
Good evening. My name is Carl Lugeans, 114 Old Mill Road. Pleased to be here in front of you tonight, and thank you for your time on this request. As Mr. Hartegre said, and he pretty much summed it up, this is a small sliver of land that's sandwiched between I-75 and a parcel in the county. The development that's occurring is occurring in the county, and in order to get a driveway up this slope, we need to combine the two parcels so we wouldn't have split jurisdictions. It makes sense for us, and I know tonight is not the voting night, but whenever it comes, we would... I'm here to answer any questions and look forward to a positive vote for that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lugeans? Thank you, sir. Okay, and we'll continue with the public hearing for AZ 22-02. And again, anybody wishing to step forward, make comment, either for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for AZ 22-02. Council will take this up for consideration at our next meeting. I'll now open up Z 22-01. Mr. Hartegre, if you'll please start us off with that.
Yes. This one's a little more involved in the same part of town. Z 22-01 is a rezoning application for 103 acres currently north of Center Road and adjacent to 75. The rezoning request is to rezone from the current R-20 zoning to R-812 for the construction of 199 townhomes. The developers represented by prime engineering, Mr. Rob McPherson, who's here tonight, to address any questions council may have. With this development, we do have a concept plan that is visible on the screen for those 199 units. It would come off Center Road with one entrance. This property actually dates back to 2004. There's... The rezoning conditions applied to this property along with Autumn Canyon property, along with the Everton Estates property, all combined in 2004. There were conditions put against all the properties. There was also a limit to about 360 residential units or lots for those three parcels when combined. So over time, they've developed individually. Autumn Canyon, about 79 lots developed. Everton Estates is about 182 townhome units. Now, this is being proposed at 199 units, which all total is about 100 units over what was initially approved in 2004. There are also conditions associated with each of those properties that have changed a little bit over time. The few conditions that were left, staff recommended carrying those over. I've listed those six conditions in the packet for consideration, and I'll touch on just a few of those. One condition that's important is there's a square parcel just to the west of this, and it came up in the rezoning for the Everton Estates, and that's on the Tilly property where there's a cell tower. It was recognized in 2018 that there was a county road connecting Center Road to State Route 20. It cut through that... The Tilly property. It was also Mr. Commissioner Taylor recommended or said that that was a county road that should maintain access for the Tillys to access Center Road. Everton Estates property accommodated that request. There is a portion of that road that would need to be accommodated on this project to make that final connection to Center Road. That is one of the conditions that we have recommended carrying forward. There's also a condition that no development occur above the 1,100-foot elevation mark, and that is due to water service limitations. We discussed that somewhat in work session, but nothing can occur above 1,100 now or in the immediate future. If something changes, then this zoning potentially, or any other development, would have to come back before council to address, at least go through site plan review. There's also a proposed gas easement along 75, up running north to south, in order to complete a future connection of the natural gas main between Center Road and State Route 20. Some of that was addressed in the previous case we just heard with the de-annexation. That easement is recommended to remain in place on this project also. This did get reviewed by all the departments, so all departments, for the most part, took no exception to this. Their comments would have been addressed, could be addressed during plan review. Public Works did oppose this rezoning based on the proposed townhomes being front-loaded. Our ordinance requires a rear access, rear driveway component to the townhomes in the city limits, so a variance would be needed to remedy that and allow the front-entry townhomes. So that is something to address. There's actually a couple of pages in the application that highlights those deficiencies and what those potential variances are. There are several other variances that were identified on that same spreadsheet that I've been told since work session can be addressed, and I think that the applicant will be here tonight to address that as well. The density is also something that comes up with these types of rezonings. The density for this, because it's limited due to water service, will be below the 1,100-foot mark. There's only about 38 of the 40 acres of the 100 acres that could be developed. That's going to keep density down to about two units per acre, which is in keeping with the single-family development to the south and to the west with Ponder's Mountain and Autumn Canyon as well. It's also in line with Everton Estates townhome development to the west for the same reasons, topography limits how many units they can really put on site. So staff did not have any opposition to the rezoning. If it was approved, we did recommend six conditions to carry forward with this. And having said all that, as we presented it to Planning Commission, discussions were held, a public hearing at the Planning Commission last month, or last week. The commission did recommend denial of the application. Rob McPherson, prime engineering, is here tonight to speak to the application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hartegre at this point on Z 22-01?
David, I apologize. I should have asked you earlier. Is there proposed access between this development and the one next to it?
There is no access between developments.
Okay.
Access will be directly from Center Road with one access point.
Okay. Fire gave no... No comment about the...
If it's under 199, one entrance is all fire will require.
That's correct.
Fire ordinance.
Right to the line.
Yes.
Yeah, the fire comment was they take no exceptions from R-20 to R-12, provided all city adopted codes and ordinance are followed.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay.
Sorry. Ben, you have it further. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for Z 22-01 and ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And again, when you do, if you would please give your name and... Come on forward. Your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Rob McPherson, H-62 Devonwood Trail, Marietta, Georgia. I'm here representing the applicant, Merrill Trust Properties. Have a little presentation. Now we're here, I'd like to present you, give you just a few more facts. Many of you have already heard, but just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, we have no issues with the conditions that David has proposed. There is the front-loaded versus rear-loaded. We know that that's one potential variance. We do not anticipate any other variances associated with the development. Go back to the... Back to the first slide there, okay? We know where the site is. I'm sorry, next slide. Just a couple of things. This is a 103-acre site immediately adjacent to I-75, and frontage is on Center Road. Next slide. And this is the adjacent zoning. You see it's currently zoned R-20. We're asking for the R-812, which is exactly what is the zoning beside us to our west. To the northwest is Bartow County. That is actually M-1, our mining zone, so it's a very heavy industrial property there. Immediately to the north is one David just presented a minute ago of a new development that is there. It consists of townhomes, like duplexes. I think it's... It looks like an apartment, but I'm not sure if it's an apartment. Maybe a senior living-type complex. So a similar type of zoning and certainly similar type density. And then to the south is R-10, which is a single-family subdivision. Our proposed development would have a road that would connect to Center Road. It would be directly aligned with that road to maximize safety and have a good alignment from a access standpoint. Next slide. The existing site is currently 103 acres. You can see the blue line. That represents the elevation of 1,100, which is the maximum elevation that the water system can provide. We have... We understand that restriction and do not have any issues with that from a design standpoint. We've actually done some preliminary grading on the site. The maximum elevation that the city wants to see for a... Like a faucet or a head on a shower is 1050. We have set maximum grade on any of these units at 1030, which would put us well below that, so we won't have any water pressure issues. We will also look at the water pressure. If we need to do some modeling, we'll check that out to make sure that we are compliant there. The 50-foot easement along I-75, which is sort of the red thick line, we have no issue with that. We're designed to accommodate that, and we'll provide that as part of any development package we submit. The access road to the cell tower, you can sort of see it comes off of Center Road. It is an extremely steep road now. Trees are down across it. It's not really an accessible road. We have spoken to the representative of that property and have ensured him that we will provide a new road. It will be paved. We do work with cell towers, so we know what kind of trucks they need to be able to access those cell towers. And the road that we would actually be providing would actually be better than what they currently have, and we will make sure that that easement or that right-of-way is provided so that they have that access, and they seem amenable to that. It is a very steep property. It is a very difficult piece of property to develop. We have approximately 440-foot a drop across the property. Between that steep property and the 103 acres, it reduces this property down to a very much smaller usable piece of land. Next slide. You can see that what we would propose, it's about 35 acres that will be disturbed. So, you know, approximately a third of this entire parcel will be disturbed, of which really 28 acres of it is associated with the housing development and the amenities package. Based on that, that's at a 7-point unit... One unit per acre, just based on the disturbed area. If you compare it to the whole site, it's around two units per acre. So that density, even though it's sort of compact in the area we're working with, the overall site is pretty good, pretty low density, well under the code. Next slide. I wanted to address a couple of things. One is, yes, single-family townhomes. The minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet and mixed coats. The minimum heated area within these units will be 1,000 square feet. We will meet that with no problem with the proposed units that we would be putting in. We anticipate around 34 buildings. That may go up or down a little bit, but the 199 units would be the max. You can see that access is at Center Road directly aligned with the subdivision across the way. We have good site distances. We have good... We have good visibility. The road is, based on Public Works and based on my visits, we do not think that there will be any traffic impact to Center Road. And then the number of units or number of bedrooms in each unit, I think it's probably going to be in the 60/40 split, with 60 being two bedrooms, 40% being three bedrooms. I think earlier David said maybe a 50/50, but based on latest discussions with the property owner, it's probably going to be more in that 60/40. It will have an amenities package. We haven't decided on what that amenities package looks like. What we've discussed is clubhouse, maybe a multi-use purpose... Multi-purpose use court or swim pool, tennis courts. We're not sure what will be there. And we've also been recently looking at trying to figure out how to connect these two roads. We think we've figured out how to do that and have a road that is accessible so that a person doesn't have to drive all the way through it to get, you know, get around to the end street. That area that you see off to the left at the top of the site would be the access road that we would carry across to get back to the existing road that goes up to the cell tower. So you can see that, you know, two-thirds of that is going to be nice paved road with most of it being around 8% slope, which is a very navigable slope for any kind of vehicle. Next slide. This is sort of what we envision, and I know that front-loaded versus rear-loaded. We're working to see if we can do the rear-loading from a grading standpoint, but from the topography of the site, it makes it very difficult to do that without putting in a lot of walls, a lot more paving. But what we would do is we would try to set these units back so that they're at least 20 feet off of the sidewalk to that garage entry. And what that allows, and what it actually does to the whole design, is it takes the parking in the street that causes so much problems for the fire department and emergency services. You've got two-car garage, you've got two carts in the garage, plus you have two spaces outside. That's four parking spaces per unit, which is a significant number of parking spaces in a townhome development. We do this design on almost every townhome I've ever done. The people, the different developers we've worked with, they all want that 20-foot because they understand the importance of keeping the sidewalk clear so people can walk up and down it, and also getting people out of the street so that they're not parking in the street. We realize that is a variance. We don't want that to be an issue as part of the rezoning, but, you know, being transparent, this is sort of what we visualize, and this is what we would speak. And I think that... I think that gets all my comments. I think all the other items in there, we're good with.
Welcome any questions that you may have. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McPherson?
What do you think rent's going to be on your units?
Rent? I don't...
Cost of rent lease, or you're going to just do purpose?
I have no idea. Then one of the big challenges we have in right now is the cost of construction is just going up crazy. We priced the... We were doing some pricing today. From two years ago, those construction costs have gone up 50% in two years. So that's a real challenge for the developers, particularly with one that is this difficult to grade.
The owner of the planning commission said they would be doing sales.
They're not renting.
They weren't being developed, as they were.
I really have a question, more of a comment for you. Normally, the school system is one of the divisions of the city that comments on rezonings. They've deferred their comments because they have not yet received from y'all a breakdown of the number of bedrooms per unit for your overall development. I would just recommend that you get with Mr. Hartegre and Mr. Manino and get that information to them so they can provide that to the school system, so the school system can forward their comments to the council.
Yes, sir. Be glad to. I thought that had already been done. I was out of town last week when the hearing was.
I was as well.
I think it was... Yeah, I think initially they said 50/50, and I think that's changed to 60/40.
But just get something in writing that David or Randy that they can give to the school system. That would be appreciated.
Glad to. Anything else? Thank you so much for your time. More than welcome to answer other questions you may have. Thank you. Continue the public hearing for Z 22-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Hi, council. My name is Robert Walker. I'm an attorney at Jenkins Bowen &amp; Walker, and I represent Tilly Properties, Inc. Just a very brief comment. We are not opposed to the development. The only thing that we would ask, and I have spoken to the property owner and to Mr. McPherson, and been assured that they do intend to maintain that access, but we would just ask that when the council does make a decision, that it do carry forward that prior zoning condition that was enacted in 2018, I believe, requiring that access be maintained. There is a... You can see if... Could you go to the aerial of the property? You can actually see the cell tower is right here. It's this one dot. And you can see the road that comes down, and this is actually the road that... Existing road to go down. I've shown this with Pearson's drawing. Currently, we go down and came through about here and came out of Center Road. We worked with the Everton Estates people to move that over slightly to so as to not disrupt their development, and of course, we are happy to work with this developer as well to maintain that in a way that, you know, makes sense and doesn't interfere with that development. But we would ask that the council, when they do make their decision, that they carry that condition forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, continuing on with Z 22-01. Anybody wishing to make comment, may do so at this time.
Hi, good evening. I'm Donna Slaven of even the Ponder's Mountain subdivision, which is just down Center Road from this proposed development. I'm at 10 Everest Drive Southeast. Thank you. And I haven't heard much conversation around traffic on Center Road, not specifically related to this development, but there's two other developments of townhomes on Center Road. So when we put the three of those together, along with the development that's on Smiley Ingram, which is... Center Road is kind of a cut-through to get to Smiley Ingram, to get to 20, to get to 75. So the combination of the townhouse that's development on Smiley Ingram Road, along with now three developments of townhouse communities, I think will have some significant impact on the traffic on Center Road. It's a two-lane road, and, you know, we'd like to be able to continue to have access in and out of our property. So I think that's something that I'd like to see considered. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sherri Reese, and I live at 22 Canyon Trail in Autumn Canyon subdivision. And I too have concern about the traffic. If y'all are familiar with Center Road, it's a two-lane windy country road, and as you mentioned, we're getting... Actually, it's a total of about 700 townhomes between the one on Smiley Ingram and the three on Center Road. So that's definitely going to have an impact. I'm concerned because these developments are right in the curvy part of Center Road, and we'll have school buses stopping at each of these. That seems to be very dangerous because people speed on that road going around the That seems to be very dangerous because people speed on that road going around those curves and all of a sudden you come across a pot of school bus. Also, when there's accidents on seventy-five that reroute the traffic off of seventy-five, they come down Center Road. The last accident they had a couple of weeks ago where the truck was on fire, it was backed up from forty-one all the way to Ponder's Mountain, which is past the seventy-five overpass. That's a lot of traffic. And one of the issues is there's a flashing turning arrow on forty-one coming off the center. That's a real problem anyway right now. And several of us have written to, um, GDOT and asked them to take a look at that. So that's in the works. But the traffic, I mean, you can just imagine how much traffic's going to be added. To say that it's not going to have any impact, I don't believe that. So I just wanted to express my concern. It's my neighbor's concern also, all of us concerned that live on that road. So if you would consider that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to make comment on Z-2201 may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z-2201. And again, Council, we'll have another public hearing at our next meeting and then take that up for consideration. What is the date on that? June second. June second. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can, if I can interrupt for just a moment. Anyone that has spoken or any, any guests that is here, if you will, please make sure that you sign in on the sign-in sheet right outside the council chamber so I can make sure that I properly record your name and addresses, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Julia. Uh, moving on, uh, Tom, the floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Christopher McKeller with Malden and Jenkins is here tonight and will give a re-presentation of our, of the city's fiscal year two thousand twenty-one audit. Christopher.
And as you're making your up, I'll just, for people that are here at the meeting or maybe, you know, we had a, a meeting prior to this where, uh, you went through the, the full version of the audit. We appreciate the thorough work that you've done with that. And, uh, so now you'll give us a synopsis of, of that finding so that, uh, folks can do it. So thank you.
Correct. So as Tom mentioned, my name is Christopher McKeller. Uh, I'm a director with Malden and Jenkins and I was the main point of contact for, uh, the city's audit. Uh, I'm here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And you should have before you the auditor's discussion and analysis, which I'll hit a couple of points in it, uh, for the audit results and then a few required communications. So if we flip over to page four, this is the audit results. So as you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management and our responsibility as external auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. What I'm sure you would like to know is how did the city do? Uh, Malden and Jenkins did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which means the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects. On page five, um, one thing that I wanted to point out is the city does prepare an annual comprehensive financial report, which goes above and beyond the, um, required financial reporting. Uh, this includes the introductory section and statistical section. So the city should be commended for their efforts in putting that document together. There's a lot of good information in there. Tom and the, the rest of the team, they do a great job pulling all this together, um, for the city. Then if we flip over, uh, to page fourteen, I'll hit, uh, a couple of required communications. Uh, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in the performance of the audit. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, Tom and the, the rest of the finance department, they do a, a great job of having everything prepared for us when we show up to do the audit. Uh, any questions we have, uh, they're an open book and bring that to us. Uh, we had no disagreements with management on accounting principles and we are independent of the city, uh, as required by AICPA standards and is what you would want from your external auditor. Uh, we had no, uh, material weaknesses or significant, uh, significant deficiencies for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Um, so all the findings that we had in prior years were resolved. So the city should be commended with that as well. And that is all I have for you this evening unless there are any specific questions.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any specific questions, but, uh, for the public standpoint, uh, I know you guys, Thomas, put together this bound booklet. It is on our website if anybody wants to see that. But I do, again, I know you mentioned it, but Tom and his staff have done a great job working with you to mayor, prepare this report. It is very difficult and very time-consuming, so I do appreciate Tom and your team doing, putting forth that effort. Obviously, uh, no findings, significant findings is important to us from the standpoint because that shows that we are doing everything in, in the most efficient and effective manner and to the public standpoint that we are transparent as possible.
Sir. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And thank you, Tom, and, uh, to your staff. And congratulations. I know that's, uh, good, it, it's, it's always good to have our auditors in, but it's, as you said in the work session, it's always, uh, good to have them go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, uh, Mr. Morgan, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request, uh, to have the memorandum of understanding from the, uh, Georgia Exceptional Main Streets Program, uh, to have Council approve it and allow the mayor to sign that, uh, going forward for us. It's requested by the DDA Board and, uh, DDA Director.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillum, you've got the next three, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the first one here is a project in Dillinger Park for the gazebo with Red Top Industrial. Uh, they'll be renovating the gazebo, uh, based upon the, uh, removal of the wood handrails and the wood flooring from the beginning, ending of the bridge all the way into the gazebo itself. With that, they'll be installing six-by-six posts, a lag bolt system, new deck boards, a top plate for the handrail system and pickets, and bottom plate for the handrail system. And it will also include an exterior gate at the, uh, back end of the gazebo for lake access. And the structure will be screwed with deck mate screws. And the total amount of this project will be thirty-five thousand five hundred, uh, with a completion date of no later than June the thirtieth. And, uh, we recommend, uh, this project to Mayor and Council for your approval.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now that that's passed, it'll essentially have the same look.
Uh, it'll look, uh.
Some design modification.
Yeah, the benches that you see.
I'm talking about the top, the roof line. I mean, I know everything's, you already mentioned the rail.
The roof line, no, it'll just be the bridge itself and in, inside the gazebo.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Uh, next one was with Carswell Fence Company. This is a project at Deerfield Park, uh, to replace the, uh, current fencing that's out there. It'll still be the white vinyl, uh, three-panel fence there, uh, but we will also extend the, uh, existing parking lot. We, like I said, it will be with Carswell Fence Company. Um, so what the material will include will be the three-rail vinyl fence with forty-eight bags of cement and labor to install the fencing. Uh, so the amount of fencing and installation, uh, will be seven thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Uh, new gravel for the parking lot will be estimated at seven thousand five hundred dollars for a total amount of fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars with a guaranteed completion date of no later than June the thirtieth. And we recommend to Mayor and Council for approval of this project.
Thank you. Um, sorry, go ahead.
From this picture here, I know that we spoke and that this might be of interest. Could you maybe show us where we're expanding the parking? And then I think you were talking about a dedicated in and out?
Yeah, absolutely.
If I'm walking over here, what, um, it would be, the parking lot will now come out to here. So the fencing will come out here and come over this side. So all of that will be extra parking that we can have there. Uh, the only in and out light now is right here, so we'll make another one here. And we'll have signage here, so you'll have an entrance only here and an exit over here. So you'll have the flow coming through here and then come out of here. And we want to do that especially with expanding the parking lot because based upon with, uh.
The popularity of the disc golf course that we have out there and with the tournaments and with the number of people that's out there on weekdays, uh, weeknights and weekends, as well as that's where our lacrosse program is getting ready to take off as well. So we want to make sure we have ample parking for everybody out there.
Are you putting in any islands to help designate or delineate?
No, it's just going to be a open gravel parking lot.
We, we are trying to do something just to add, extend to the parking lot efficiently and, I mean, it's costly more to do all, just to be sure.
So hopefully they'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Tom.
Uh, yeah, this is a geo bond project that'll take place in Dillinger Park at the back entrance and exit. Um, it, uh, as you go out onto the, uh, to the road to Indian Mounds Trail. Uh, the project will include the removal of the bushes and the brush that you see here on the screen and that will be replaced with the fence that'll be very similar to the fence at the main entrance exit of Dillinger Park. Uh, it will not have the stone rock post, uh, but it will have big, nice fence post in the middle, but it'll look very similar to the main entrance and exit. Steel materials, uh, their, uh, proposed amount is eight thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars and the lumber for the project is estimated at seven thousand five hundred for a total of fifteen thousand six fifty-five. And our parks maintenance staff will be the one that will do the removal of the, uh, brush and the bushes as well as the installation of the fence, uh, with a completion date of no later than June the thirtieth. And any additional money we have left with the geo bond, um, from this geo bond project, that will go to the water filling stations, uh, that we'll be able to place in Dillinger Park, specifically at the tennis center and at the concession stand, uh, football press box.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Speaking of water, Mr. Forsythe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, um, a request to replace some, um, screens or brushes for fine screens operated in the water pollution control plant. Uh, these are wear items, so they last about three to five years on those screens. Uh, we're requesting your approval to purchase these from the sole source provider, Zima Corporation, for eight thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor, painting and drywall repair. The fire department's going to be moving here in the next, uh, couple of months to five hundred South Tennessee Street, which is part of our garage. Still, it's been used, uh, some interim space has been used by the police department and the sheriff's department. They're going to be moving out and I recommend approval to do some work with painting and drywall repair, eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? If none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. This is a change order for Engineering Services on the Duffett Ferry Road widening project. It's a pretty substantial change order, uh, that covers a wide range of tasks. The total amount is five hundred and twenty-four thousand four thirty-five ninety. And our consultant is here and I'm going to turn it over to him, let him, um, briefly go over, uh, what the change order consists of and then, uh, we can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good evening, again, Carl Lugens, uh, one fourteen Old Bill Road. And I appreciate the, the time to discuss this project. I know it's been going on for quite some time. There's, there's been a lot of, a lot of twists, a lot of turns, uh, in what's been required, um, over the twelve years since we've, since we started this project. DOT has changed a lot of their policies over time. Um, and, uh, and personnel has changed and, uh, so, so methods of design have changed, things we have to do. Anytime you borrow money for construction, which is a project framework agreement where the construction cost for this is, is paid for between the state and federal government, and anytime you borrow money, uh, well, not really borrow, but it receive money from the, the federal government, there's a lot of strings that are attached to this. And those strings, um, those strings often require a lot of studies to be done, redone. Uh, they have timing effects to the studies, uh, and then you have to re-study the studies. And sometimes you feel like you're just doing the same thing over and over. So, uh, this change order here is, is pretty significant. The reason being is pretty significant. In two thousand sixteen, we did our traffic counts, uh, out on the road. Every, every five years, we're supposed to, we're, they require you update the traffic counts until you get, uh, your, your environmental document approved. For the last twelve years, we've been, we've been working really diligently to try to get an environmental document approved. Um, everybody knows this is a very historical sensitive area. There's a lot of archaeology out there, but there's a lot more to the, to the environmental document than the archaeology. There's noise, there's air, there's hi, history, archaeology, ecology, you know, and the list goes on. Um, and this is what the federal government and, uh, and, you know, and the state require in order to receive funds of this because projects like this can have impacts on noise and air quality. Uh, certainly can have the impacts, uh, through their eyes on history and archaeology. So they're very sensitive, uh, as to what we are impacting and, and studying this to the nth level to make sure that we've chosen the best route possible. Um, so, eh, as I mentioned, every five years, the traffic study, the, the traffic counts, um, have to be redone until you get an environmental document. Well, we were at the point of submitting our environmental document. Um, we submitted a draft environmental document to be reviewed, uh, and we, our initial comment was, hey, we want you to study one intersection further beyond your, uh, this was back in two thousand twenty, uh, beyond the, the limits that you are now. We said, okay, you know, but how does that really affect, you know, we, because we're terminating, our, our, we were terminating at two highway points and we, we tried to argue through that. They said, well, no, that, we have to study that to make sure we're not going to overburden these different intersections. So at that point, we started re-studying it. We, we asked the question, can we use our existing traffic counts? And the point, they said, yes, you can use your existing traffic counts. So we moved forward, did that study, believe that was also a change order. That was then, that traffic was then approved. All that got put into the environmental documents, sent to federal highway. And I want to say it was in, uh, within a few months. And then, and they said, well, your traffic counts that generated the traffic study are now outdated. So, um, the current traffic engineer that we have is a subconsultant to Southland Engineering, Kemely Horn, very reputable company, does projects all over the country. They, they said, hey, you know, we have to, because of a lot of changes in policy, they have new ICE analysis, which is, uh, intersection studies now that are different from what we have. We have to go back through and study everything else. In addition to the former traffic engineer is, that we had on this, which when we adopted the project, um, we kept a lot of the subconsultants from that, is no longer practicing. So we had to swap over through midstream. I mean, this has been twelve years. I may be retired before then. But, um, we, uh, we've got, we came back and said, look, you know, it, it is fairly expensive, but we're having to, we're, we're basically starting over at scratch with, with the new, with what we have to do now. Had we had that information, we would close the chapter on what we call preliminary plans. And, um, and what that means is we can go into purchasing right away in final plans. And right away in final plans is a lot less restrictive than what we, what we've been going through with this environmental document. So we've come a long way, we got right there and we fumbled. So we've come a long way, we got right there, and we fumbled on the one yard line. Well, not really a fumble, but we got tackled. Um, and so, uh, we have to have this change order to move forward, to update the traffic study, um, that is the major component. Once we update the traffic study, we have to then update the environmental again, because we're going to have different traffic numbers that are projections, because the original build date got pushed two years because of all this. So everything kind of gets updated now. Um, so, once we get that, that's the last thing that we have to do to turn in the environmental document again. That gets turned in, um, and then hopefully the approval process comes through federal highway to move forward. So the two main change orders in this, um, were from the traffic study and the environmental document being updated. There are other, there are other subconsultants. Our bridge subconsultant doesn't finish his plans until what we call final plans, which happens after this phase of this environmental document becoming approved. Well, they gave us that price back in two thousand and ten and called me and said, Carl, there's no way I can do, do my work for what we, we're, you know, our fees are almost three times what they were then. So that was understandable. So I said, okay, and so I called all the subconsultants and said, look, we're going to put a package together, go to the city and, um, and ask for a change order, so I don't want to do one now and do one next week, so I need everybody's information. The geotechnical, um, company that we had out there, they, uh, they did a bridge foundation investigation and actually had to go deeper with their investigation than they originally thought that they would have to go. Um, so that was a, that's a very small change order. It was, it was about six thousand dollars of all this. Um, so when you add all that up, they're actually, then our change order that we're, that Southland's actually doing, we're managing all this, um, but we're also having to do a few updates to our plans, so that's also included in this. You add all that up and, and that's what comes up to the, the total of five hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-six.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Lugens?
I just need to make sure I understand exactly where we are, um, at this point with the change order. So we're holding on a new traffic clean study, and you're holding on an updated environmental. And once you get those two done, you submit, and then we're ready to move forward. All this other stuff's done.
All that, everything else is done. Um, now, the timing of that, it's going to take fourteen months to do this traffic study. To get, and what, what I mean by that, to, because there's certain times that we, we can't just go take the counts this summer. We have to wait till the fall to take the counts. Um, and then they have to do the study, and then they have to send it in the D, GDOT and get reviews and all that stuff. Um, but they have, uh, they have not missed a date with us since we hired them back in two, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, based on that, uh, I believe that, yes, to answer your question, the cr- the question is, yes, that's it, to move to what we call final plans and right away. We start purchasing right away.
Okay.
Um, the environmental document will be behind us, finally.
And this dollar amount is for all those, uh, this is-
All those services.
-all the get you seek has been thrown in with this. The timeframe that you talk about, I understand these things take time. GDOT is on board and knows that timeline, and, I mean, they're not going to send us letters saying, hey, you missed this, that, or the other. Is that it?
Correct. They are on board with it. Actually, we sit down and, and write the schedule with them. So we have monthly meetings with GDOT. Every month we get on there and, and, and it's pretty much several of their departments that are involved. Where are you, where are you, where are you? At this point, there is nothing that we have as far as to submit to them to where we're behind. They've got some review things that they owe to us. Um, there's still things that are happening, um, but the major lift is this environmental and traffic study.
Carl, just a couple of questions. Are all these our existing consultants or any, any of these new ones?
Yeah, uh, yes, well, so, uh, Kimmely Horn is a new consultant that we-
Okay.
So we separated in ties with our traffic engineer, uh, that we had on the project from, from day one-
Right.
-back in, uh, um, twenty, well, prior to twenty twenty. And so, yes, Kimmely Horn is a new one. All the other ones are the same. The environmental consultant is the same, and, um, I'm not, uh, they're very reputable too. They do a lot of projects, uh, Edwards Pittman, um, uh, you know, and we even thought about going out and looking for other consultants, but at this point-
No.
-you can't do that.
No, no.
I mean, you'd have to reteach them twelve years of, of education, and I can't, we can't do that.
And so if, if I understand the timeline, fourteen months for the traffic study, then probably, what, three months to update the environmental after that?
Yep, it, no, it's probably three to six months to update.
Three to six months.
Yeah, so we're looking about twenty months to, to get it back into federal highways.
And then where does the bridge plan, you sort of mentioned that, where does that come in and how's that affect that timeline?
The, the bridge plans are part of the final plan, so that doesn't affect it.
So that's not part of all of the preliminary?
It, it actually goes in the environmental documents, but those don't really change. There was a minor change to the center line based on something, but that was a, an engineering thing that came up. It's been resolved, it's been dealt with. It wasn't really part of the, it wasn't part of the critical path. Um, their, their deal is they don't do any, anything else until final plans. So this is just a change order for them to where, when they pick it back up.
And just so council understands, this twenty-month process to get all this done for our new five year, five-year clock, that starts at the end of the twenty-month process? That these things are good for five years, or does it start today?
No, so there's two, no, it didn't start today. Um, so it starts at the approval of those, those items. So we will do the traffic counts probably in the fall. Traffic counts get sent to GDOT. They will then approve that probably somewhere around the first of the year, I would guess.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, first of twenty twenty-three, so those counts will be good through twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
Or, um, so when I say they pushed the project, you know, they pushed the project two years out to construction, but that would put us in construction around twenty, I guess, twenty-five.
Okay.
Um, so we hope to beat all, I mean, that should all, we should be well beyond that. Um, the, then the second thing that has a timing effect, uh, is the environmental document. The environmental document doesn't get approved till even later from then. Now, once they get approved, they're approved by, once they get approved by federal highway, it's done, there's, there's no more time clock on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got a couple. Now, how much money do we still have left that were grants that were given to us?
Sure, on page one forty-one of the agenda shows, uh, the, how much is available. Right now, out of that, uh, PFA, the grant awarded, it's a hundred and eight thousand five sixty-two, it's changed, but there's a remaining fifty-eight thousand eight fifty-three to be built. Basically, it's forty-nine thousand seven oh eight of that six hundred and, uh, nine thousand grant, so-
That's left.
That's left. So if you take forty-nine thousand seven oh eight off the five twenty-four change order request, it's four hundred and seventy-four thousand seven twenty-seven and five cents have to be paid for from-
So basically, it's getting into our pocket?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Tommy, could I ask you, is there any way we could get with DOT and maybe review the scope of this project to see if there's something that can be done to make it where we can, it's not so drug out? I don't know.
Uh, I mean, at this point, um, I mean, at, at this point, you either really need to finish the path we're on, or you would basically have to start over. Uh, you know, it's, um, it, uh, that's, that's my, um, my sort of view of it. Uh, is that, would you say that's correct?
Yeah, if, if we try to change in line or change the scope of this, it's probably just killing.
Well, we're changing the scope. Everyone, he says, change the scope.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
Yeah, we're, what we're talking about is change the scope of the, um-
The, the physical project.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, um, because, um, the, the scope is something, um, that's, um, was approved at the concept report back at the beginning of the project. And so, once you get that concept report approved, you know, that's the path you got to go down. And, uh, and that's at the very beginning. So if we wanted to change, you know, the project significantly, um, you know, if we, you know, for example, it's, we're proposing a four-lane with a raised median. If we want to go to a, a ten-lane or, you know, a three-lane, which, either, either way you go, you would have to go back to that con- and redo the concept report, and, and basically, everything would start, start over.
And instead of updating all of these reports that are, consultants that are here, they would be brand-new reports based upon the new concept. So all this work would be thrown away, and they would start fresh for their entire review process, is how it works.
So, so when GDOT comes out and does a public comment portion?
Yes.
Are they taking public comments? Are they taking, is that kind of like water over the dam? Because now they have these public comments, and if you look at the public comments, there's a lot of negative feelings towards the project. Okay, so, and I know this necessarily to do with your change order, but it does, but, I mean, when you look at, start looking at the negative comments where the, the public's saying, hey, we don't, we don't want this project to take place, at what point have we already passed the, no, we can't do this, or no, we're not going to do this because of the public comment?
No, well-
The public negative comments haven't started until just recently. I mean, I don't know what spurred it, but it has been-
Because GDOT sent out a card-
Yeah.
And, and opened up-
That's part of G-
But your, your assessment of negative comments needs to be in context, because we've been doing this twelve years and we've not had any outcry hardly whatsoever.
And, and what you have to understand is-
Yeah, that's understandable.
GDOT is required to do a, on all federal funded projects and state projects. They're required to do a public comment process. They take those comments, they evaluate those comments, and they have all over the state, I'm sure Carl and Tommy can give you numerous examples, where they've revised projects based on those comments. They don't revise it based upon negative comments, understand. GDOT are professionals, they're engineers, they're envi- environmental people. They are, they look at the project based upon those professional needs, the professional studies, and they review the comments received based upon that. And if there's something in there that they weren't aware of, or something that may change the way they looked at something, they revise it. I comment that I don't want it. I think we don't, that there's not a need for the traffic and those things, not, aren't things really that GDOT would address in their review and in their process back to us. Now, those comments are also, of course, being given to mayor and council. And when all of these fund studies are done, hopefully this is the last batch, um, GDOT's going to come to the city council and say, are y'all ready to go on this project? And then, not GDOT, but y'all will take all those comments into consideration, and then y'all will say, yes, let's begin right-of-way acquisition, or y'all may say, we decided not to do the project. Um, you don't get any of this money back if you make that decision, but, you know, that's how it works.
So like the change of scope would be like going and just saying, okay, we're on a four-lane, we want to change it to more timed lane?
You want to add, you want to add in a divided, divided highway when there's not, you want to widen the intersections, you want to make them roundabouts instead of T-intersections or T-intersections instead of roundabouts, you know, where you physically are changing the layout of the road. I mean, that's, that's what the scope is. The scope is the physical layout of the road.
Okay. So what was the determination on going at another, think you had to go to, did you have to go to Mission Road as a determinist?
Yeah, um, actually, Mission Road, the intersection at Mission Road, um, that intersection is functioning okay. The stretch between, uh, one thirteen and Mission, the two-lane stretch between there is, um, it's, it's almost at a le- without, I mean, just moving, it's almost at capacity now. So, um, we have to show them, hey, the intersect, you know, the intersection still works, people can get to the intersection and turn, but a lot more people are traveling on, uh, which is burnt, I guess, burnt Hickory Road at that point, over the bridge. There is a lot of traffic on there, and it's, and it's burdening that two-lane section. And there's only going to be more. I mean, you guys know, you see the developments that are, that are coming.
Yeah, I know we had talked about, I know Tommy kind of expressed that when we were talking about the center road and about the capacity that road could take, and that it still has a lot of capacity. Do, and from the earlier traffic studies, do you see that on Dr. Ferry? Do you see the, have you, I mean, we've already done the traffic study.
Yeah, so, and a little, and I'll give you a little bit of a history. So this all started even before me. I, I, this was, um, um, even before Tommy, uh, um, this started with another engineer, another director of the, of the, of Public Works, and they said, hey, Carter Grove is about to build up there. The city's growing. Um, we're getting all these trucks going downtown. Um, you know, they're going to put three thousand homes in Carter Grove eventually. This, you know, this was two thousand four and five.
This actually, this, that project actually goes back to when Sam Smith was, was mayor.
Yeah, and so it go, it, it goes back a long time, and, and they said, well, what are we going to do? Because the only way you can get from over there is, is you're not going to go all the way out to the airport and cut down, or go out seventy-five and, and cut back into Carter. So this, people started looking at where the growth was going to come. And it's, it, and in fact, it's coming, it's just been fifteen years since they thought it was going to happen. Um, but it, you know, now the new school is going in there, there are other, there are other phases of Carter Grove being built. I know of two or three developments now that are, uh, looking on Duffett Ferry Road. Uh, I know some that are on Walnut Grove Road, um, uh, you know, on the Walnut plantation back there, uh, there's folks looking to develop. So the area is starting to get congested. Um, in two thousand and nine, the, the Delger family proved to put on their plan that just that one project would have overburdened the road more than it can handle at, at that time with the traffic at that time. So, um, although that it's taken a while, um, the, the timing of starting those plans and those thoughts was probably right, because it does take a long time to use federal dollars. Um, it, it was a forethought, and this is again, my, this is my opinion in what, in my opinion and what we, we found in our, Tommy's talking about the concept plan and how the, how this was approved in the concept plan. It didn't just get thought up and go, hey, we want a, we want a four-lane road. No, it, it looks at, okay, forty years out from when the road might open, um, and says the road should still carry capacity for, you know, forty years from, no, that's not quite, it's forty, it's twenty years actually, but, you know, for a long time after the road's built. So, um, so the catalyst that was really sparked this is going now. It's starting now. And we're starting to see what was predicted twenty years ago happened. We're seeing it. Now, there may be another downturn between now and the time that the, the road gets built, but it's only going to slow down for a matter of time. At some point, it's inevitable that there's going to be a lot more cars out there and a lot more people out there. Um, and so thus the need and purpose statement was, was justified.
Right, so I understand the concern amongst council about the money that's been spent. Um, I guess, when you take a look at, again, on this front end, at the end of the day, there's going to be a road that's built that's going to be funded by federal and state dollars, generally speaking. What's, what's the cost of-
You know, we're close to twenty million dollars right now.
On, on just the construction of the road? That's what the Fed and the state would have to put in for the, for the road construction.
And it keeps going up every day.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Council, turn it over to you.
Make a motion to approve the change order?
Second.
All in favor to Capa saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Reinhardt, you are up with banking services.
I'm the mayor and council. Uh, on March the eighteenth of this year, the city finance department issued an RFP for banking services. The RFPs were due back by April the eighteenth. We had three banks that basically responded, Ameris Bank, Sanovus Bank, and Truist Bank. After a lengthy, uh, analysis of the three RFPs by myself and finance staff, we have determined that Ameris Bank is the best fit for the city based on the needs that were stated in the RFP. Basically, what it boils down to is all three banks have essentially the same, uh, processing, the same, uh, types of org- well, they're all the same types of organizations, but it bo- basically boiled down to the pricing structure. Ameris Bank has a little better pricing structure than, than Sanovus and, uh, our current bank, Ameris Bank has a little better pricing structure than, than Sanovus and our current bank, Truist Bank. So, with that, I am recommending the banking services be awarded to Ameris Bank. This is pending a contract being approved by myself, city manager, and our attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion. Motion to approve. All in favor to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Finance report, Mr. Reinhardt.
Yes, sir. Mr. Honorable mayor and counsel, we will be looking at the March 2022 and comparing it to March 2021. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.4 million. The expenditures increased by $2.3 million. Two items of interest or revenues that I, I look at on a monthly basis, local option sales tax have an increase there a year to date of about $854,000 and billing permits and inspection fees have an overall increase there of about $396,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by $2.5 million. Expenses decreased by $9.1 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $9.2 million. Expenses increased by $7.7 million. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of gas, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.7 million. Expenses increased by $2.9 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by $7,000. Expenses decreased by $278,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $365,000. Excuse me. And the expenses increased by $238,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Finally, in the fiber objects fund, revenues increased over last March by $105,000. Expenses increased by $182,000. This is due to decreased, I'm sorry, increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In our cash position for the month of March, total unrestricted cash increased, total restricted cash also increased. SPOS revenue accounts balances, SPOS 2003 is $31,892.48. SPOS 2014 balance, $231,991.10. SPOS 2020 account is $5,124,567.24.
Thank you. Anything to add?
Again, mayor, the general fund's doing very well for this fiscal year. Appreciate Tom and his staff for continuing to watch over the finances and all the department heads working to help with that.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Penny, you had a couple of items you wanted to share before we closed out this evening. Please step forward.
Mayor and counsel, I just want to let all of our citizens know that beginning on Monday, we're going to start our natural gas safety survey. This is something that happens every four years. Our gas department's contractor is going to make a pre-call on Monday. This is just a heads up, you're going to get an actual call on Wednesday. Simple survey, 10 questions, less than five minutes, yes and no. Do you have gas service? Have you been receiving safety information in your billing? This is going to go to both our customers and the non-customers along our service line when it comes to gas. So, if you want any, any more information, it is on our homepage, sent out on the app today, and then also phone calls via Everbridge. And the next item, I just want to give a huge shout-out to our Public Works crews because it is National Public Works Week. They're out in the elements, they do a great job. It's hot, they're out there. When it's snowing, they're out there. They'll even work double duty after the holidays. So, we have good stuff. And I want to point out that one of our citizens sent in images of her granddaughter the other day. She was waiting outside with cold bottled water for our crews coming in and then picking up solid waste. So, I thought that was very apropos for this, this week. Good stuff. So, thanks to our Public Works.
Thank you very much. Any other visits that needs to come for council this evening?
I'd just like to publicly say congratulations to the class of 2022 as they, I believe they graduate this week soon. So, congratulations to all those and their hard work and may they go forth and conquer.
Thank you for that. Saturday night, baseball, Cartersville plays in Rome against Loganville for a state championship. We wish them well in that. Go Kings.
It's at Rome? It's at Rome, it's at, yeah, I've been hell stating with the Rome Braves play.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. There you go.